I'm definitely not going to a D S for a D S day. Where they have for D U T V's.
Cause you're coming out of the first.
Yeah.
Are you?
Yeah. I told my sister I liked so. That I took it.
Is Steve on here? So you could take. Okay. Well, you'll still get to do that.
I'll get to do your.
Yeah, abstentions.
We gotta take, I gotta.
Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is a Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, July twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, uh, we may have a little call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Abou Asli?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Yeah.
Ms. Menzer?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you. This time we have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. This evening, we do have one proclamation for National Disability Independence Day, which is July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, and we have, um, a proclamation that's been, uh, presented or, uh, provided by our Civil Rights Commission. We have Rachel at the Civil Rights Commission here to accept it, so.
Okay, whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety by President George H. W. Bush as the nation's first comprehensive law prohibiting discrimination against persons with disabilities and guaranteeing them the same opportunities as all people. And whereas the ADA helps to overcome barriers that persons with disabilities face every day and addresses issues such as narrow doorways, small bathroom stalls, and improves mobility and safety. And whereas the ADA protects persons with disabilities from employment discrimination and provides them with better access to goods and services, including Braille alternative, alternatives for the visually impaired and closed captioning for the hearing impaired. And whereas the ADA has helped millions of Americans with disabilities achieve equal treatment. And whereas the National Disability Independence Day not only celebrates the signing of the ADA, but also celebrates the independence of persons with disabilities and their accomplishments and contributions to our nation and city. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abou Asli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two as National Disability Independence Day in the City of Marion, Iowa, and encourage all residents to become more aware of the barriers faced by persons with disabilities and work to eliminate such barriers.
You bet. Go ahead.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Ron Livingston of Marion, Iowa, played Richard Pimentel, who wrote the ADA in the movie called Music Within. So I encourage you all to watch the movie. It's, it's wonderful. And I also had invited Richard Pimentel here in two thousand and nine in Collins, Collins, Rockwell Collins, and, um, they, he did a presentation there. So, um, that's my personal connection. I just want to share that with you all. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on with the agenda, uh, the next item is a public forum, which is the time that just set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is on the agenda, but not associated with a public hearing. If there are, um, members of the public here to address counsel on any item that is not on the agenda, there will be a time at the end of the meeting. This is a time to address counsel on any item that is act on the agenda, but not part of a public hearing. Public hearings have an opportunity for comments, too. So is there anyone here to address counsel on any topic that, yes, uh, would you like to come forward? Uh, yes, please come forward. State your name and address. And I'm sorry, uh, if you can, yeah, redirect the mic and speak into the mic for the recording. Thank you very much.
Frank Sherman, uh, forty-one seventy, uh, Canton Court here in Marion. So.
Welcome.
Thank you. Last time I was here, it was a little bit more fun occasion. I read the Ode to the City Clerk, which was this is a little bit more serious. Anyway, I wanted to talk about UTVs if I might, um, the cautionary side of the issue. But so far, I don't think anybody's spoken publicly here about that. And if you would, if you give me a little latitude on time, I'd appreciate it. I'm trying to encapsulate six months of issues into a short time. There was a request by the Marion UTV owners to be able to get in and out of the city to the county where they could use their off-road machines. If you don't mind, I'm gonna read this because I have a lot of points and I have a short memory. So, and also go faster if you want to get over to the Fiesta. Anyway, the council discussed it on February first and then again on April fifth, when Chief Ketchmiller brought a map into the city council depicting entry and exit routes. The chief briefed the exit and entry route scenario, and some council members discussed having the city fully open to UTVs. An ensuing meeting, the draft ordinance that council discussed had opened up the UTVs to the whole city minus two street segments. Maybe it's my memory, but I can't recall a public consensus of council or direction to staff to open the whole city to UTVs. Maybe it's my memory. So far, I've not heard anyone articulate why allowing full access to UTVs would be a greater good for the city and its residents. Chief did an outstanding job of researching this for the city. So far, two scenarios really have been discussed. Just entry and exit to the UTVers or wide open usage, and they have two widely different results. The exit entry scenario by its nature restricts outside UTV users from having free rein on Marion streets and does two positive things. First, it grants the request of the Marion UTVers to be able, be able to get in and out of Marion. Second, it provides an opportunity for a temporary pilot project. The chief of police said in this scenario, the exit and entry scenario, it would be hard to enforce. But the council has said a few times that they trust the UTVers, that they would follow the law if full access was allowed. So logically, the trust issue should not be a showstopper for the entry exit portion also. A little bit more about the chief's briefing to council on April fifth. The chief mentioned that the Can-Am owner's manual said specifically it was for off-road use. Polaris said the tires are not to be used on city streets. Additionally, although the council blocks and acne have them, no larger cities. It is mainly smaller cities that allow them. The chief also said when he contacted other chiefs through the Chief of Police Association about UTVs, he said the opinions were kind of split. A lot of chiefs said, we have them and we've had zero problems. The other chief said, no, we don't want them because we had issues with them at one time. The chief also suggested a larger number on the UTVs so they could be easily identified instead of the small D N R sticker. The second scenario, the whole city approach has several negatives. First, since UTVs have not been allowed on the streets in Marion before, there will be unintended consequences. Second, it would allow, if not attract, outside UTVers into the city. Poker runs and caravans of UTVers on outings could come into Marion because Marion is the only large community in the area with amenities, which allows them on the streets. For the future, what UTV group could pass up coming to Marion's future beer garden at the Broad and Main Complex? And the newly renovated city square park or the artway for music and/or a drink or an ice cream cone or fries or pizza. Third, outside UTVers would probably not know the rules and restrictions in Marion's ordinance, nor would they know the city limits, and they are hard to identify. Fourth, there is no need to allow UTVers full access to the city, and it might well run counter to the image the city has established with quality of life efforts such as art, music, design standards, and extensive efforts to beautify the city. Mixing in off-road utility vehicles seems to run counter to that effort. Businesses and future residents may consider off-road vehicles running around the city unappealing. Regards the other issues, noise, safety, and aesthetics, which have been talked about a lot here at council. Noise, per the draft ordinance, UTVs may only be operated on the roadways between the hours of seven A M. and ten P M. That mirrors the noise ordinance exactly for residential areas. Otherwise, why not let them operate after ten? Or do UTVs switch? Or do UTVs switch into a riding mower exactly at ten P M? Because they are too loud, it seems. What does a UTVer do in the summer when the light, when he gets light out at five A M? And there's an early group ride scheduled? Do they wait till seven before they start up their UTV and head out of town? This is a quote from, excuse me again, from the noise ordinance. The following constitutes evidence of rebuttable presumption of a violation of the section. A presumption of violation. Four B, it says in the ordinance, the noise ordinance, equipment marked with either off-road use or not for street use. In other words, it is presumed you have violated the noise ordinance unless you prove otherwise. This is a legal thing that probably should be addressed in the noise ordinance if I read it right. Safety, per the ordinance, UTVs are not allowed in the business, uh, Business one fifty-one east of Hy-Vee. Evidently, it is not safe for them to be in traffic. If they are not safe there, are they safe on Marion Boulevard or on Blair's Ferry? The UTV is treated like an off-road vehicle on Business one fifty-one because of safety, treated like a car and the rest of the city, and treated like a noisy riding mower between ten and seven A M. Why? Because UTV is essentially an off-road vehicle. It does not fit the on-street mode. The aesthetics issue, not all UTVs are going to be red, white, blue, or yellow. Some will be black, brown, tan, camouflage, gray. One particular new model is all black, and its shape and contours, the best can be described as ominous. A kind of UTV that will be used by a villain in the Batman movies. I sent a picture of one I took in Wisconsin. I saw it up there. I sent a picture to Councilman Harper. The best I can describe it, it's an A R fifteen aggressive look transferred to a UTV design, and they're not gonna all gonna look that way. A utility vehicle may be parked on the street in your neighborhood or in your neighbor's driveway, spring, summer, and fall, and maybe in the winter, too, with a snowplow on it. Boats, campers, and RVs cannot be, uh, stored in the driveway, but a utility vehicle, I guess, can. The UTV may be a cheap pickup truck of the near future. Take it to Menards or Blooms Garden Center and load up with payers of bricks or plants and shrubs and drive it back home without messing up your S U V. Uh, this may sound good, but it means they will proliferate. Counsel is relying on the fact that other cities have allowed UTV usage within their city limits. But it brings up the question, are these cities like Marion progressive, growing, enhancing quality of life for the residents, or are they less progressive without the motivation or the retired, retire mentality of Marion? It was mentioned that there would be review of the whole city ordinance in six months or a year, but that may be too short a time to gauge the full effect of the ordinance. Once the UTVers get the freedom to roam the entire city, they will not want to give that up, and they will proliferate. The city will not be able to put the genie back in the bottle. It may be politically impossible. By the way, UTVers will have access to Blair's, excuse me, Blair's Ferry Road and places like Blooms Garden Center. However, the bowling alley and the sand volleyball courts and Edison's restaurant, et cetera, within the city limits will not be reachable. At some identifiable point, unidentifiable point on Blair's Ferry, the road splits right down the middle. It's Cedar Rapids on the north and it's, uh, Marion on the south. So you can't get to the bowling alley, but if you did, you could legally come home. The same issue with Marion Boulevard and Tuckstown Road. You can get to Carl's O'Kelly's and Taco Bell, but further on, on the south side of Tuckstown Road, the Cedar Rapids and the Northlands are Marion. Odd thing, you could drive into the shopping center, Michael's, Collins Road, and that whole shopping area, which is Marion territory, but you couldn't legally get back out because you'd be going through Cedar Rapids. This is the best I could determine looking at a map. It's called the Lynn County Off-Road Vehicle Map. It's an interactive map. The Marion city limits are not obvious to the casual driver or even the resident. You can easily travel into Cedar Rapids and not know it. Will the city go to no UTVs allowed signs like Wisconsin has for certain streets or areas within Marion? UTVs also have access to the, well, I have access to the Marion Airport and the volleyball courts out there. Again, maybe this is good. All I have to do is go through the Walmart back route and across Leonard Drive and through Medco's Business Park to get to Airport Road now. Here is the big picture. Counsel should be looking not only to the immediate timeframe, but out five, ten, or fifteen years in the future. The mayor has already mentioned that Marion will eventually grow to fifty thousand or sixty thousand people in the future. If so, UTVs may be incompatible with that future. If eventually the whole city ordinance can't be significantly modified or rescinded, it will be tying the hands of future councils, or maybe just providing headaches for future councils. The solution? You are not obligated to do anything in this case. The only real obligation is to the greater good of the community and the residents as a whole. If you do anything, it seems the best course of action is a temporary pilot project, the entry and exit scenario where you can evaluate the UTVs and see how the public accepts them. This, the decision council will make on this issue may be the most momentous and monumental and far-reaching that's taken place in several years. Remember the precautionary rules. Better safe than sorry, and just because you can doesn't mean you should. UTVs have not been allowed on Marion City streets before, and this is a paradigm shift and sea change, and nobody knows what the future will bring. Consider moving incrementally on this. I'm not uniformly against UTVs, but I think it should be a step-by-step incremental process, well thought out. The stakes may be higher than you think. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel, do you need, uh, a card filled out by Mr.?
I have one.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sherman. Um, anyone else to address counsel on, on any, any topic that is on the agenda, but not associated with the public hearing? This is the time to do that. Okay. Welcome, sir. Uh, if you could, um, say your name and your address and then speak into the microphone. Thank you.
My name's Dennis Gallagher. Live at thirty-one thirty Sunburst in Marion. Lived here since two thousand and fourteen. I'm happy to be here. I love Marion. Uh, the city of Marion seems to pride itself on the many amenities that we have available to all students. Pools, parks, particularly the trails to an avid bicyclist. Amenities are the attractive and desirable features of a community, anything that adds to the citizens' comfort and convenience. I do not own an ATV. I, uh, have never ridden one. However, I don't believe that our city opening up city streets, and I use the term ATV. I don't know if that's the correct term. That's what I'm talking about. I encourage the council to keep, uh, an open mind, recognizing, of course, as you already do, that, uh, the state law is not a mandate that each and every community or city in the state needs to follow. I hope that, uh, before considering and going further as a council, that, uh, you will listen with an open mind to all the opinions expressed, including mine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to address counsel on any topic that is on the agenda, but not associated with a public hearing? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close this part of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I moved to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A one to G one, resolutions three zero seven zero six to three zero seven two three.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. You approved the consent agenda as presented, including, uh, items A one through G one, resolutions three zero seven zero six through three zero seven two three. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next part of the agenda, I'll turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Asli's abstention as follows. This will be items E one through E three, resolutions three zero seven two four through three zero seven two six.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Asli's abstention as follows. Items E one through E three, resolutions three zero seven two four through three zero seven two six. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries with one abstention, and I'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three zero seven two seven, approving an agreement with Gov. Temp's USA LLC regarding temporary employment in the fire department.
Second.
It moved in seconded to approve resolution number three zero seven two seven, proving the agreement with Gov. Temp's USA LLC for temporary employment, uh, in, regarding temporary employment in the fire department. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve resolution number three zero seven two seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three zero seven two eight, approving and endorsing nomination of Randy Sternhead to the Iowa Communities Assurance Pool, I C A P Board of Directors, city seat.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero seven two eight, approving and endorsing the nomination of Randy Sternad to the Iowa Communities Assurance Pool Board of Directors for the city seat. Discussion.
Yeah, Your Honor, just to comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, uh, want to, um, state my own personal endorsement for Randy in this role. I think he'll bring a, an extreme level of competency into that consideration, and I'm hoping successful to be added to the Board of Directors for I C A P.
Thank you. Great.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all of, all those in favor of resolution number three zero seven two eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved unanimously. Next is a public hearing regarding the pre-engineered metal building package associated with the new public service maintenance facility. Uh, do we have a, the public hearing is open. Do we have a presentation?
Yep, Ryan. And so, uh, thank you, Your Honor. So on July seventh, the city council approved, uh, the project calendar for the pre-engineered, engineered metal building package for the new public service facility. On July twentieth, we received five bids. Out of the five bids, King Knutson Construction out of Iowa Falls was the low bid with consideration of the alternate bid. Uh, their total was four million five hundred and eighty-five thousand. It's staff's recommendation to award that to King Knutson Construction.
Okay, thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open for comments from the public. Anyone here to address counsel, either in favor or in opposition of this measure, please come forward. Okay. Seeing no one is coming forward, we will, um, uh, first we'll ask if any comments have been received outside this meeting.
Not that with our office.
We haven't received any. Okay, please note that for the public record, and we'll close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero seven two nine, approving bids and awarding contract King Knutson Construction for the pre-engineered steel building package associated with the new public service maintenance facility in the amount of four million five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Menzer, seconded, seconded by the, by the mayor pro tem to approve the resolution number three zero seven two nine, approving bids and awarding contract King Knutson Construction for the pre-engineered steel building package associated with the new public service maintenance facility in the amount of four million five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, Ryan, I just wanted to, to draw out just a clarification here. So the alternate package that King Knutson has proposed, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, that is, uh, additional dollars to hardened facility?
That is correct. So with the bid alternate, the conventional pre-engineered metal building will be built to what they call I C C five hundred standards. That's a nomenclature for, basically it becomes a FEMA safe room at the, at that point. It will be built to those standards. It will not function as a safe room, uh, due to the precast wall panels that we, we currently have in inventory, but it will be built to those standards. An example is that it will be rated to take up a projectile up to two hundred and fifty miles per hour.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's, that's useful. And that two hundred and seventy-two thousand is, uh, substantially less than what we were from an engine, engineer, engineering estimate anticipating. Wasn't that four hundred and fifty thousand?
That is correct. We, the engineer's estimate was four hundred and forty thousand dollars for the hardened facility.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that clarification.
Though discussion. Okay. We'll vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number three zero seven two nine, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution three zero seven three zero, approving a contract with S C S engineers for the solid waste collection study and authorizing payment in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero seven three zero, proving the contract with S C S engineers for solid waste collection study and authorizing payment in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number three zero seven three zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen, amending chapter seventy-five of the Code of Ordinances related to utility terrain vehicles, UTVs. This is our second consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the second consideration of ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen, amending chapter seventy-five of the Code of Ordinances related to utility terrain vehicles. Discussion.
Your honor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, first off, I want to thank Mr. Sherman for his comments here this this evening. Certainly, there were some valuable inputs to as I'm I'm thinking about composite perspectives about this. I do have a process question, just so that we're clear. This is the second second consideration, so we are pending one more consideration at our next meeting.
That's correct.
So, I think the the importance of going through three readings on an ordinance gives adequate opportunity for those for and against to bring before us their perspectives relative to this. This is an important decision. So, I would just, I I'm hopeful that in our third and final consideration, that any additional perspectives that can augment our understandings and inform that final determination will be brought forward. So, I just, that's the process, that's the reason why the process exists.
So, Grant, Grant asked a question, clarification, right? That we have one more reading and I too am sort of continuing to take in the information, both from the folks that are supportive of this and the folks that are not supportive of this, continuing to read and learn. So, I just thought it was important to share, I haven't provided my perspective yet and so I'm still considering as as we collect that information back. So, once again, encouraging folks to make sure they bring forward their perspectives as we make a pretty important decision here.
Anyone else? I'll just note that I'm I'm still not in favor. I haven't been convinced yet. And I hear the arguments, like other cities are doing it, cities all over the country are doing it, far more cities are not doing it than are implementing this ordinance. And I I really appreciate and respect the the people who have come forward and and been proponents of of this change. I respect that they're leading us through this process in terms of educating the council and bringing the vehicles here for us to see what they look like, all of that. I, you know, I I appreciate and completely, you know, believe that they, you know, these are, they're, they, these are people who will abide by the rules and do their best to follow the ordinance. But we're, this is, we're implementing an ordinance for all people for all time. It's not just for this small group that has been before us. You know, and I just, I I just think that it's it's going to increase the workload on the police department because I think there's by the sheer allowing it to allowing use will will create opportunities for people to violate the rules and people to jump on the trails because it's just temptation. It may not be this particular group that's here before us or that has been working with the council to educate the council. And, you know, it could be other other people. And this is, this is an ordinance that, like I said, for all people, for all time, not just for a particular group. I've been an advocate from the beginning from the beginning for a measured approach, a trial run so that we can see, we don't know what we don't know. You know, as much as you hear about other cities not having issues, I hear people say, oh, it's a it's a mess in this city and, you know, my parents live in this city and it's it's a total mess. I I hear it all from different people, all different sides. So, I just think it's it's prudent to take a measured approach. I, no one is a bigger advocate than I am for the city of Marion being a leader. And I've advocated for us being leaders in many, many different ways. I don't think this is a necessary one. I don't think this is one where I really want Marion to be the leader. I prefer to for Marion to be the follower, to see how it works in other cities, to to be able to work out the problems and the issues. You know, this is that rare occasion where I don't know that Marion has to be the leader or has to be the standout. So, that's that's my opinion on it, that's how I feel. And I I respect everyone's opinions. I respect that people have put a lot of thought and study into this. I don't think anyone up here is making a decision just based on personal opinion. I I do trust that everyone is really, and just by by experience with everyone up here, I know that we have a very thoughtful council that makes well-founded decisions, that makes educated decisions. I'm proud of that and I share that publicly wherever I go, that I think this is the best council around that that really does make well-founded, well-thought-out decisions. Occasionally, you get an issue where, you know, it's, it can go either way. And, you know, and this just happens sometimes. But so I I I respect everyone's positions and everyone's decision on this, so. Sarah, go ahead.
Following up on that, mayor, as you're talking about long-term decisions, do we, we can, we we have stated we're going to review this, we just haven't set the date, right? I mean, if we get six months into this and it's an absolute influx of communication with concerns, then are we, did we set the date for review or we'll just, we're just going to pick this later and review it? I guess I keep coming back to, in my mind, as I go back and forth and process the different, the input and the thoughts and the information, that we have that opportunity as a, if we're not at this point doing a measured approach, which would be a great, I agree with mayor, that would be a great option. But the absence of that not happening, we set that set, right? We've agreed to a review of this. This isn't just a, we're throwing this out there forever. We just, but we talked about it.
Your honor.
So, go ahead.
Yeah, well, Sarah, I just want to pick up on on that concern. The the comment I feel to make a few minutes ago, I really do think, under any scenario of implementation, that we set an interim benchmark timeframe to review the performance of the ordinance and in the community that's taking advantage of it. So, whether that's at six months or at 12 months, whatever that timeframe needs to be, maybe that timeframe is somewhat stimulated by, if all of a sudden we have an influx of of complaint, that we stop and and take a look at it at that point. I I think, under any scenario of implementation, review at interim steps is going to be important to us. The second thing that I I I wanted to comment on, and it's somewhat related to the review of the ordinance, chief, I'm looking at the current draft of the ordinance, Section 75.09, Schedule of offenses and fines, and we had talked about elevating those a bit. Where are we at with that? And I I think it's imperative for us to have a reasonably robust schedule of fines in order to incent the proper behaviors.
Yes, sir, we changed that. Kara Bullerman and I worked on it. We put it into the draft that you guys will see for the final one. Like we talked about at the work session, we wanted to be consistent with the state law where it applied. Anything that was unique to the proposed ordinance, we put a set fine that would be $250 for a first offense, $500 for a second offense. Third and subsequent offenses committed within one calendar year were $855. And we picked that $855 because that mirrors the state, the simple misdemeanor fine, the highest you can go.
Your honor.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to add to that. After the conversation about the noise ordinance last, on Tuesday, we also discussed this afternoon, chief and the city clerk, myself, adding on the noise ordinance as something that we need to review as we go through the recodification process. And so, we changed the language in the proposed ordinance to state that the fines for a noise violation of the UTV ordinance would be treated the same as what noise ordinance violations are treated in Chapter 53. So, if we raise that, this is also automatically raised.
Yes, city manager has a comment.
Thank you, your honor, just in regards to the comment about the review after six months. If that's the, if that is the timeframe, and we've heard six months multiple times, we've already talked internally as a staff, it's reflected in the minutes and we'd we'd plan on doing a review at an, at the appropriate work session if this was to pass. I would add that, as we do with anything related to the staff's administration or enforcement of respective codes and policies of the council, that if we see an issue arising, should this become, should this pass and become law, that we would not wait, if there was an issue, we would not wait until the six months to bring it for a review. But it's already on our radar. If there is a desire to look at it a different timeframe, we just asked for that direction, but we've been going off of that six months. I think it's six months or a year review.
Thank you.
This is Sternad.
Thank you. Chief or Kara, could you, either one, just refresh everyone's memories again. If we were to pass such an ordinance, they would have to be, they would have to be applied for and permitted. And forgive me, I can't remember if that was done through the DNR, if that was done in the city. The second component to that would be, I think that at a minimum, this is an educational process. So, you know, people just don't roll into town without the proper permits for this. And at such time that they are all given the rules of the road, so to speak, for their their units and what their, you know, their responsibilities are. So, I was just kind of looking for some feedback on that again, too, just to refresh everybody's memory again. If this were to go through, what is the the next proper steps for receiving proper permits for that?
The DN, they're registered through the DNR. The the recent state legislation banned cities from charging a fee to allow people to ride them in in the city limits. We talked about, Mr. Sherman had mentioned trying to get something more visible on there with a number. When the new state law came out that said that we couldn't charge a fee for that, we didn't know if that was going to be feasible or not. I've talked about it with our command staff just yesterday during a meeting that if the council would approve this, that there'd be a learning curve. It'd be a learning curve for the officers. Certainly, we would start off with warnings for people. We're not going to be heavy-handed with it right off the bat because I I agree with you people, especially people that aren't following along through this process. There's some things in ours that that is unique, that's not included in the state. So, we would leave that to the officer's discretion, but certainly the warnings at first. The repeat offenders would be the ones that we'd we'd really be cracking down on.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And just for clarity, too, I know we'd have previous conversations on this. And the one thing I I want to keep bringing back around, and I hate to keep belittling this topic, but, you know, under our guidelines of citations that would be issued, they are motor vehicle related offenses. So, your personal driver's license are at stake and they would be reprimanded through insurance and also renewals if repeat offenders would be, you know, if if we continue to have those violations. So, I want to keep bringing that forward to people, let them know this is no different than the mopeds or anything else that's on our streets at this time. Your personal driver's license are at stake with this. So, if you carry a CDL that is part of your employment and your livelihood, this extends to that as well. So, I just, for the benefit of everybody listening, I wanted to make sure that there was exact clarity on that particular topic because that 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 is a very serious issue. Thanks.
Just a follow-up question. When you were talking about being permitted through the DNR, like what does that mean? What do I, what does the permit mean? Do I have to follow some certain something with the UTV?
I think it's essentially it's registering the the machine through the DNR. Some states, they don't have titles that come with these and so that's essentially the way to title it through the state because there's not an actual title that goes along with it.
Okay.
Generally, it'll be, you present your sales receipt or receipt from sale and and the DNR will register.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add to that?
Well, it will come back if anybody else, anybody else? I just want to make sure everyone has a chance to speak. Go ahead, Randy.
I just want to follow up on Councilwoman Colette's deal there. With the state of, or with the DNR, if you register, you know, things have to, there are items that we register that we do not title. Boats are another one. So, for example, if you have a boat, a fishing boat, a recreational boat that's registered, it's actually registered through the DNR and that's how they hold title in Iowa. Some states, you are presented with a title, just like a vehicle. Iowa does not do that in many states in the Midwest also. So, they do the registration process. They're issued a sticker with a serial number. That serial number goes back to the VIN number of that unit. Could be a boat or the UTV or ATV. And that's what ties back the ownership to that as well as registration of that that vehicle. Just for clarification.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. And we'll vote, all those in favor of the second consideration, approving the second consideration of ordinance number 22-14, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. No? One no. The ayes have it.
Your honor, I move to approve Resolution number 30731, approving a certificate of substantial completion for the 2019 Fire Station Project and authorizing early release of retained funds to Kristner Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $448,410.39.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 30731, approving certificate of substantial completion for the 2019 Fire Station Project and authorizing early release of retained funds to Kristner Contracting in the amount of $448,410.39. Discussion. Sir?
Thank you. Ryan, this might be a question for you, but could you just give us a brief where we at on the station? Has the punch list been completed? I know that that was under Amal's title when she was here, but I'm just looking to know, have, has everything been buttoned up and completed on the fire station?
Thank you, Councilman. Since Amal leaving, interim fire chief Jason Hansen has taken on the lead. Jason, would you be able to?
Sure, thank you. We do have just a few items remaining on that. Two minor code issues. One, the materials are on hand for the patio area, just waiting for install. Another is door hardware that we are or have been in discussions with regarding that hardware. And then I'm waiting for a response back from System Works, one of our commissioning agencies, to ensure all the systems have been operating normally, but they've been putting a substantial amount of work into that since I've taken over this project and been doing bi-weekly check-ins with them.
Okay, great, so it sounds like we're getting close. Great, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor of Resolution number 30731, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. It's time we have another public hearing regarding the 2022 Laug Park Sidewalk Replacement Project. Public hearing is now open, do we have a presentation?
Yes, your honor, this is the public project to replace the existing sidewalk out at the Laug Park area and then also add additional sidewalk on the north side of the building due to its age. We did receive two bids. The low bid came in from Midwest Concrete at $175,305.0. It was 108.9% of the engineer's estimate due to recent increases in prices. Has a late start date of August 22nd, 35 working days and $300 per day in liquidated damages. And we are recommending proceeding with the contract with Midwest Concrete.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here to address counsel on this topic, either in favor or in opposition? Please come forward. Okay, and I'll ask if any comments have been received outside the meeting.
We have not received any.
Okay, Rachel.
I have not received any comments.
Okay, please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing, move on to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number 30732, accepting bids and awarding contract to Midwest Concrete Inc. Regarding the 2022 Laug Park Sidewalk Replacement Project in the amount of $175,305.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 30732, accepting bids and awarding contract to Midwest Concrete for the 2022 Laug Park Sidewalk Replacement Project in the amount of $175,305. Discussion. All those in favor of Resolution 30732, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution three zero seven three three, authorizing the submittal of application for traffic safety improvement program. TSIP funding for the intersection of Highway one hundred and East Post Road. To reconfigure the existing intersection with additional left and right turn lanes. And to upgrade the existing signal for the new turn lanes as well as queue detection. Warning system for the westbound traffic at East Post Road.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three zero seven three three. Authorizing the submittal of an application for traffic safety improvement program funding. For the intersection of Highway one hundred and East Post Road. Reconfiguring the existing intersection with additional left and right turn lanes and upgrading the existing signal. For the new turn lanes as well as a queue detecting warning system for the westbound traffic at East Post Road. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution number three zero seven three three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three zero seven three four. Approving City of Marion American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding allocation for infrastructure projects.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three zero seven three four. Approving the City of Marion's American Rescue Plan funding allocation for infrastructure projects. Discussion.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Just, just to springboard off of this approval for infrastructure spending. The, the other, the other elements on our allocation plan for the ARPA funds. We'll still have an opportunity to work through that at a future date.
That's what my understanding.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
This is just committing to those programs that we heard about on Tuesday. Just those, those.
That's correct. So after the vote, if, if it's affirmative, those yellow is going to turn green. And then the remaining ones that are not obligated will continue to work through that, bring them back for counsel for discussion and direction.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Is that clear? All right. All those in favor of approving resolution number three zero seven three four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen, designating an area of Marion as the 2022 multifamily urban revitalization area. This is the final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve resolution number, or ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen. This is the final consideration of that ordinance, designating. The 2022 multifamily urban revitalization area. Discussion.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just for, for the preceding records. So this is the Talon development that's going on at the old Hame site?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor of, of the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. And for the next item, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number three zero seven three five, approving Silver Ridge Estates preliminary platte located west of Albernett Road. And north of Don Drive Marion Iowa Integrity Custom Homes Inc.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three zero seven three five, approving Silver Ridge Estates preliminary platte located west of Albernett Road and north of Don Drive Marion Iowa. Integrity Custom Homes. Any discussion? Seeing on we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries with one abstention. And I will turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you.
Will me read it? Okay. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero seven three six, approving the revised Broad and Main Monumental Staircase Central Corridor Review for property located at eleven oh seven, Seventh Avenue, Marion, Iowa. Eagle View Development.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three zero seven three six. Approving the revised Broad and Main Monumental Staircase Central Corridor Review. For property located at eleven oh seven, Seventh Avenue. Discussion.
I had one question.
Go ahead.
So Dave, the, the seating that they're proposing in the new way of doing this, that's going to be, I'm assuming that's part of the. Restaurant that potentially would go in and not open in public seating, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
If Carol could go to the next slide, that kind of gives you a little more overview of it.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of resolution number three zero seven three six, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. At this time, we have a public forum, which is a time that is set aside for comments from members of the public. On any topic, whether or not it's on the agenda. Anyone here to address counsel, please come forward. Yeah, we'll, we'll go with this gentleman first and then, okay. Please state your name and address.
John Godar, forty-three fifteen Widgeon Drive.
Welcome.
Thank you. I, I missed my chance earlier to talk about the ATV UTV issue, and I want to do so now. I could list hundreds of reasons that my wife and I like to ride, but that'd take too long. So I want to list a few facts instead. Many counties in the state have already, well over half the counties have already approved ATV UTVs. The state saw how popular these things were and how many people were getting involved in them and the many benefits of them. So as you're all aware, just this summer, they passed this statewide, so that every county now allows this. There are many, many articles. I researched several news articles. There's been television spots. Interviewing officials such as the chief or city officials in places that have done this. And I've not seen one that they regretted it. They've had time to think about it and, and they, and they don't. And I'm talking about things that not just somebody said, well, we don't like it. There's going to be people that don't like this. I think it's the fear of the unknown. And I commend you all for looking at this objectively and with an open mind. Because there is some consideration to be made, but the facts are overwhelmingly the places that have done it. And there's a lot of places say, we don't want that. We don't want to do that. But the ones that have, the sky didn't fall. They, they don't end up regretting it. In twenty eighteen, nearly half of the state's ninety-nine counties had ATV UTV ordinance before the state forced it statewide. They had four years' time to determine the effectiveness or to see if there was any problems or fallout from it. And I don't know of a single city or county in that time that changed their mind and retracted the ordinance that they had issued for, put out. There's always going to be those cases. And, and we try to remind that there's going to be cases that if somebody's doing something extremely illegal, they're not operating in. The conditions of the ordinance. That's someone that might have been a drunk driver, reckless driver, doing something. Whether there was an ordinance in place or not. So I think you have to use, you know, be careful about, well, if we have any complaints, you're always going to have complaints, too. There'll be those people that are going to complain. And I've heard the noise being an issue. My neighbors' three Harleys are a heck of a lot louder than my UTV, much, much louder. These things are not that loud, not to say that somebody couldn't decide to cut the pipe off of theirs and be loud, but that's why you have the ordinance. I do think this ordinance will be a very positive impact to the City of Marion financially. Riders like us spend a lot of money in shops and restaurants and bars. I have driven my wife across half the state of Wisconsin, going from one little shop to another. As she checks out the small towns and the communities, Mount Horv is a great place. There's just so many great places. And that's what we do. We spend a lot of money on this stuff. We look forward to being able to stay in the state now. The state doing theirs for the, all the counties is awesome. And we really hope Marion will do it for the same reason. Poker runs bring a lot of money to your community. They're not a lot of, I think the name gives it a bad implication, but it's usually people like me. Older retirees spending money and going out and riding. I was in one last summer that we, they raised several thousand dollars for the honor flight. They've raised it for mainly veterans groups. And so it's a very good thing. And something I think is, is been missed that I really want to point out, and I don't want to take too long. Is you're looking at other people coming into town and being a problem. And I, I agree, that's something you should be concerned with. The group is obviously very okay with the fine amounts being up there pretty high. Something that the chief did, he wrote an excellent ordinance. But something to note, this has a turn signal requirement in Marion's ordinance. The state does not. Turn signals are not cheap. My turn signal kit put on my machine was three hundred and ninety dollars. I don't think the people that are going to be causing problems are going to spend the time, effort, or especially the money to put turn signals on them. So now you have a means for law enforcement that if they see someone that's not using a signal when the law would require them to do so. They now have probable cause to stop that person and say, as the chief said, you start out with education. Hey, you can't be in here with the machine. They don't come from the factory with, with signals, none that I know of. You got to add that later. So I, I just think that's important to note that I think that's going to help cut down on riders that don't take this stuff seriously. And want to come tearing through the City of Marion.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council members. My name's Scott Fones. I live at twenty-two thirty-one Tamarack Circle. I also happen to be a member of the Historic Preservation Commission here in Marion. In nineteen oh seven, there was a rail line that ran from Marion to Cedar Rapids. The remnant of kind of that rail line, there's a pillar down by Thomas Park where that bridge crossed. And that rail line carried a very specific type of train. It was called an interurban. And interurbans were pretty popular in Iowa. There was one here, obviously ran between Marion and Cedar Rapids and ran back and forth. And it kind of followed along the road that First Avenue has. Now, I want you to take that piece of information and just put it on a mental shelf somewhere. We're going to come back to that here in a minute. Nineteen oh seven, the Cedar Rapids City Council member by the name of Billy Steponik. Bought a car. Now cars were something that were brand new in Lynn County at that time. And I know this is going to sound sexist, but we all know what happens when you get a guy in a car. He wants to get his friends together and go for cruises. Well, he contacted George Lightner, who happened to be the mayor in Cedar Rapids. And a couple of other Cedar, Cedar Rapids council members, and they went for a ride. Now, where did they go? They came here, perhaps because Marion City streets were a lot better than Cedar Rapids as well. Don't know, just could be. So they cruise around, they have a great time, and then they head back home down that road, which would turn into First Avenue. Now, cars at that time didn't have some of these plush luxuries that we have today in our vehicles. You know, things like gas gauges. I bet you know where I'm headed. Billy was traveling down the road with the mayor and with his other council members, and the car sputtered to a stop. He was out of gas. Well, what to do? It wasn't like you could go to the Casey's at the corner of Blair's Ferry and Seventh Avenue. That was still ninety years out into the future. And in nineteen oh seven, because cars were so new, there were no gas stations. They didn't exist. In fact, if you wanted gasoline, you went to the hardware store because the hardware store vendor happened to have a tank out back and he'd sell you some gasoline. Usually these were folks that lived out in the rural areas that used gasoline to power their appliances. That's in a completely different topic, but file that one away too for later. So they're stuck. They can't find any gas. What are they going to do? Let's all get out and push. So they're out pushing this car down the road, trying to find gas somewhere, trying to find a farmhouse. Because the area between Marion and Cedar Rapids at that time wasn't particularly well populated, and it was agriculture. Well, remember I said they were pushing it down the road on First Avenue? Often the distance, they heard a whistle. It was the interurban. Now, I'm just going to read to you the few sentences out of the Cedar Rapids Evening Gazette from nineteen oh seven. Because I think it probably captures the story a little bit better. "The men's misfortune was compounded by the fact that First Avenue between Cedar Rapids and Marion paralleled the streetcar line connecting the two cities. As the mayor and party were pushing their car down the road, a packed streetcar rolled down the tracks. While passengers gawked at the stalled motorists, the mayor pretended to look at the car's running gear on the opposite side of the car from the trolley. While another alderman hid behind a tree." I guess that's what we call profiles in courage. I tell this story because it represents something kind of fundamental. And that Marion was a great place to come to, still is a great place to come to. And in nineteen oh seven, it was the county seat. And recently, I just happened to see a picture of, I believe it was Mayor Obwasley, next to a T-shirt that said, Marion. The best part of Cedar Rapids. And I think he was right. Now, there's another reason why I'm kind of telling this story. I was in the process, I'm researching a book that I'm writing on a Green Mountain train derailment. And I come across these kind of vignettes every now and then as I'm doing my research. And I chuckled at this story. But it occurred to me that if this were four or five years ago. I probably wouldn't be standing here telling you this story. There was an esteemed colleague of yours and somebody that was a highly respected member of the community that probably would have told this story instead by the name of Paul Draper. Now Paul's no longer with us. But I thought that maybe, given that there's a lot of new faces around here. They didn't know that Paul used to kind of regale everybody with these kinds of stories at the end of city council meetings. Now, I'm certainly not going to show up every city council meeting and give you a story, or every other for that matter. But I think once in a while, I might stop by and just. Tell you something I ran across, something about Marion, because that's what Paul would have done. And I think it was a good tradition to carry on. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else to address counsel? Okay. Oh, go ahead, sir.
Good evening. I'm Dan Cudworth, twenty-five ninety Hillview Drive, Marion, Iowa. And though this is probably not new to you folks, I'm going to express views on, on the public or on.
Fireworks.
Legal fireworks here in the city. I understand this is kind of the state has your hand on this, but you know, they collect. Revenue off the tax. I'm pretty sure they like that. Probably the fundamental reason for it in the first place. What I can't figure out is what, what Marion's benefit is in having legal fireworks. Cedar Rapids doesn't have it. I don't think Iowa City does. I don't understand why Marion has to. So you know, my wife and I, we've enjoyed, always enjoyed municipal fireworks, public displays. You can go any small town, you can go to Cedar Rapids, Marion, Low Park, city or central city, you name it. Everybody has fireworks displays. And they're fine because. They're scheduled, they, you know, they, they, they only last for a finite amount of time. And you can plan around those. You can plan, go to them, you can go plan, stay. You can plan go to them, you can go plan stay away from them, whatever. But ever since the state changed the rules on this here, what, three, four years ago now? And then Marion? Twenty seventeen?
Yes.
So ever since then, and, and, and the argument was, well, people are going to go out of state and buy them anyway. But fireworks in the neighborhood was never like it is now. You go out, out of your house on the Fourth of July, and there's fireworks going three hundred and sixty degrees. And they're not all legal fireworks, by the way, either, however they manage that. And, you know, it, to the, to the UTV problem, the, the people don't, I, I don't know if UTV people do, that's fine. But fireworks people don't follow the rules. They start shooting them off a couple of weeks ahead of time, maybe, maybe a week after, throughout the day, throughout the evening. Not, you know, certainly, certainly not fifteen-minute displays, but just gotta, somebody's got to be shooting one off all the time, it seems like. Well, so our dog is terrified of fireworks, lightning too, for that matter, but can't do anything about that. So she won't go to the house. She tries to get behind the toilets, tries to find a closet with the door open. And you have to go, literally have to go find her. She won't go out, so to go potty, you gotta put her on a leash, drag her out, hope nobody shoots a firework off while you're out there. Because if you do, she's done. So, and your house is, is supposed to be your safe place. But on the Fourth of July, or you, it's not a safe place. There's, you cannot get away from it. Just booms everywhere. So we've tried everything with her, we've tried consoling her, we've tried just being firm with her, tough with her, ignoring her, whatever. We even this year, we got sedatives from the vet. But nothing really works. And so on the night of the Fourth, we waited till about eleven twenty, eleven thirty to take her out on a leash to try and keep her under some kind of control. And figuring fireworks stops at eleven o'clock. Get out there, she's just ready to do her business. And so young adults, I'll call them, walking on the sidewalk through a bunch of firecrackers right in the front yard. Well, she, she heard that, and, I mean, we're very close. You know, rips a hundred and eighty degrees the opposite direction, slams up against the end of the, the leash. And then off in another direction, another bunch of fireworks goes off. So she goes that way till the end of the leash, and then that way, and then that way. And there's just absolutely no, no, no control of that, tries to make. So in any other world, I think it'd be considered animal cruelty. And if somebody saw us treating her that way, and, you know, such that she would do that, we'd, somebody would turn, turn you in for animal cruelty. So these days with the city and the world, the emphasis on diversity and inclusion, I think, I think there are a lot of people being excluded. And a lot of pets. We've spoken to a lot of other pet owners, same way. They just don't come up and say anything because they say it won't do any good. So here I am. And then there's, I'm sure there are vets with PTSD out there. What do we say to them? Sorry, put up with it. It'll be over a couple of weeks. My wife and I just don't look forward, there's about a three-week period around the Fourth. Take her out for a walk, let's say a week nap before the Fourth. Going up sidewalk, somebody shoots a firework off up there. She immediately yanks the other direction, and you cannot stop her. I mean, we practically pulled her head off before, and she just, she'll have none of it. And so the next day you go out there for a walk, she won't even go up that sidewalk. She will not go that direction because she knows there's a firework up there. Smoking is prohibited in public places for health reasons and, and other concerns. Because it's annoyance to most people. But we don't allow smoking. So I, you know, with all that, not sure what can be done. I understand it's a state-level problem, but Marion's involved in this because Marion allows fireworks displays, public fireworks, personal fireworks use. I don't know if you can increase the fines, make it painful. I know you're not going to catch everybody. But if you catch enough, maybe the word will get around. If there's any way to influence the state, work on that too. Thanks for your time.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Mary Clapp. I live at twenty-three fifty Edwin Drive in Marion. And I have bringing up a couple of things that I have noticed in the community that I probably should be addressed. One is on Sixth Avenue between, between Sixth, it's on Eighth Street between Sixth Avenue and Fifth Avenue. On the west side of the diner, that is parking allowed on both sides of the street. And all of the businesses, because there's a lot of small shops in there now, a lot of those people are parking on the both sides of the streets. This morning, I was coming that way to meet a friend to go walk, and ABC Sanitation was trying to get out from the alleyway behind the diner, and he had to pull out, back up, pull out, back up, because there were cars on both sides of the streets. And sometimes during business hours, it's especially noticeable there because people are turning off of Sixth Avenue to go towards Third Avenue. And people are coming down A Street, A Street, and we're jumbling up there, and people are having to back up and/or back up into the business so people can go through. So I would just maybe make a suggestion that we allow parking on only one side of the street there so we can allow for two-way traffic. Want that comment there. The other comment I have is I am, I'm a military veteran. I am, I was a nurse here in the community at St. Luke's. I was also a hospice nurse out in Hiawatha. And I just want to kind of address the experience, the EMS, our whole EMS system has had during COVID, and make an appeal to you, and maybe Marion would be the first in Iowa. I don't know, I've seen them in other states. But there is a section of the Grantwood Trail between Creekside Road and Springville Road that is going to be connected to the already existing portion that's been improved up to Oxley Road. So there's going to be a connection made there. And that section of the trail, right now, it's, it was a two-way railway system in there. So it's especially wide. Lynn County Conservation does a good job of mowing it. It's very beautiful. I walk out there often. And I think it would be really nice if Lynn County would dedicate a portion of that trail to the EMS workers that supported our community during COVID. I did bring a little selection, the National Center for PTSD. I think a lot of our healthcare workers have experienced some of that over the last three years. And some of the recommendations they have stated, dealing with stress in the aftermath of the outbreak, after a period of caring for those with COVID-nineteen, especially quarantine patients, a readjustment period is to be expected. Healthcare workers will need to commit to making personal reintegration a priority. This includes, but is not limited to, seeking out and sharing social support, which may need to occur virtually. I think we're kind of past that point now. This is a twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one document. So I think we've, kind of our conditions have improved. Checking in with other colleagues to discuss work experiences, increasing supervision, consultation, and collegial support, and scheduling time off work for gradually, gradual reintegration into our personal lives. And I thinking having a trail dedicated to those first responders connected with the Grantwood Trail that begins here in Marion would just be a wonderful way for us to just express our thanks to EMS workers.
Thank you.
And I, I forgot to mention, I have been to the Lynn County Conservation Board meeting. So I'm pretty, I'm real sure of my facts about the connection being made between Oxley and Creekside. That's, that's happening. There's a few of us that are talking with them about what kind of development we want to see on that trail from Creekside to Springville Road. But that's an ongoing discussion and it hasn't been settled yet. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Harper?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. First off, Brent, I want to thank Parks Personnel for the tours that we received a week ago, I think this last Wednesday. We went to the Aquatic Center up at Cedar Falls, and then we went to the Aquatic Center, the Lost Island Facility in Waterloo. It was, it was really kind of eye-opening to see the difference in the operations and the amenities that were there. And it was, from my vantage point, a beneficial input as we consider our planning for our own aquatic center. So thanks, thanks for that effort. The other thing I think I would just say, Scott, I appreciate your bit of history. When you said interurban trail, my ears perked up because long ago in a galaxy far, far away, I worked for, at the time, Iowa Electric, which in its infancy had the interurban rail network between here and Mount Vernon and the like. So I have some familiarity with that. And I guess from my standpoint, I'll be looking forward to your periodic history lessons that you'll deliver to council. Please let me know where I send my tuition check. And, and then I guess the, the final comment, and I, I didn't get your last name, Dan? Yeah. Your comments about the fireworks really resonated with me. We've got to rescue German Shepherd. It was rescued, it, it's a mutt, but mostly German Shepherd. But it, it was a rescue because it had some behavioral anomalies that happened to include overreaction to fireworks or other loud noises. And so your comments about the reaction of your, your pet and the lingering reactions that it's had, even here, early this week, I was out in the evening, and there were some firecrackers going off in the neighborhood, way distant. But my dog still overreacted. And my dog is eighty pounds, German Shepherd, and I thought I was going to get dragged back into the house, literally. So this is a concern that has come before us on multiple times. And I guess as we plan, what we take a look at, we were talking earlier about, you know, potential review of an ordinance to permit the UTVs, however that comes out. I think we have an ordinance relative to fireworks that we should take a hard review of and, and see what we need to do to alter that. And that includes, in my mind, maybe changing the penalty structure for, for ill behavior. So I just offer that as something that we can spend some time on over the next six months to work on. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a few things I would second about the fireworks. The desire to take a look at currently what we're doing and what options we might have. So just wanted to echo Grant's thoughts on that. Also, Eat, Drink and Be Marion was last week, and I think all of us were, were there or sort of trying to participate. Anyway, the point I'm making is Jill Brook, Jill Brook, Tammy and team put on a really great event for us to support our small businesses. And it was really nice to see the community out, so just wanted to send a kudos to them. I think just two additional things. It makes me really happy to see folks here and to provide voice for the decisions that we're trying to make, whether we end up supporting your stance or not. That is what we are here to do. And so I, I just can't say enough how appreciative I am of people coming, of people's, you know, it's, there's a little bit of courage when you step up here and talk to us. And we're not, we're not tough people, but I think, right, it's a little, it's uncomfortable. And the facts, the fact that folks are doing that, I just am really proud of our community and, and the way in which our residents are coming forward and sharing their insights. I think everybody is professional and in hearing what others have to say. And so I cannot celebrate that enough and want us to continue to encourage folks to do that. That's what we are here to do, is to respond to the folks that we represent in this community. So thank you for that. And the last thing, it's more of a question, I think, is the, the lady that just stood up, I'm sorry, I missed your Mary. Thank you, terrible with names. But it talked a little bit about the parking on Eighth Street. And I'm, I know we have a process here in Marion in order to bring that forward, in order to ask for, write a change in, in parking on one side of the street or another. So I'm hoping before you leave tonight, we'll be able to give you that information and the process that we follow to go through that. So then you have the right, the right, I guess, information to help figure out the, a decision for that. So I think, oh, one more thing, sorry. I usually have nothing to say, like, oh, my gosh, I have lots to say. Last thing is, I love the fact that you came up and were giving us some history lesson on Marion. I'm not originally from Marion, and so I always find that very interesting. And it's very enduring for somebody to sort of carry on Paul's voice. He was the person, when I joined the council, that was the first to jump in and really helped me understand what it meant to be a city council member and was really, so I just really appreciate you doing that. Thank you. That's it.
All right. I was going to say something, but Colette took all the time. So I'll, I'll ditto most of what she said. Thank you for the history lesson. It's fantastic to hear someone come up and, and do that and pay respect to Paul. And, and Be Marion was fun, yeah. So everything that she said, ditto.
Thank you very much. Turn my microphone on. I as well too, and, and Colette, thank you for bringing it up. It was on my list here as well too. I think sometimes people forget that we are your council and your voices are heard. And we do encourage people to come and attend. Let it be known, bring your voices, bring your, your topics, your, your subjects. We, we encourage those, we want to hear those. To the gentleman that was speaking about the fireworks. There are many that would like to speak, and being in front of a group is very nerve-wracking. So I like to use the word kudos. Kudos to you, you were the voice today for those people. And I, I'm sure that we will have more conversations around our fireworks moving forward. So I'd just like to remind the people that we are, again, your council. We are here for you. So bring those items forward. Today, Mr. Harper and I attended the CNPO. There's a little bit of a newsflash coming out that the Cedar Valley Nature Trail received a, we received that grant today. So we're super excited. Look for some more postings coming forward on that. That was a substantial grant that was awarded. So we will now be seeing paved trails going to Waterloo that will extend all the way down to Solon. So that was a major, major victory today. So we, we all want to share in that excitement today. There will be more messages coming out on that. Scott, thanks for your message here today. Sir, I was thinking of our late Paul Draper at the same time. And for a moment there, Mr. Grant, when you brought up nineteen seventeen, I thought you were going to say something about being there as well. say something about being there as well. Mr. Harper, or Mr. Draper and I always had a lot of pokes between the ages, between us, and you sit in that seat today, sir, so we can have some fun with that.
But I, but I am the senior member of council.
Absolutely, and, and our hats off to you. A lot of, a lot of thanks to the patience to our community, to all the businesses and our citizens, there's been some discussion about all the roads and the construction, our 10th Street is, is under construction now, so please be patient with us, thank you, we're trying to get a lot of these roads done and repaired back before the school buses start rolling. There's just no good time to do a road, so thank you for your patience, we're gonna have to navigate around these streets just a little bit longer, but it will all be much worth the, the patience. To those that are riding RagBri next week, be safe, may the winds always be to your, to your back and your paths clear. I will be taking a group of 25 with a convoy of five vans out to Sergeant Bluff on Saturday. I understand that's another sellout record this year for RagBri, so safe travels to all those that will be attending that, but it sounds like the weather's gonna shape up and be a little bit nicer, they were anticipating some more storms and hotter temperatures, but that's been modified, so. I think that's all I had, Mary, I wanted to say thank you, thank you for your service, it's greatly appreciated, and I think it would be great and an honor to have a section of trail for our EMS and EMTs and everybody that serves in that capacity, it would be a great legacy for us to have in the future, so kudos to you, and again, I'm sure that's gonna be a topic for us to be circling back around in the future as well too, so that concludes my part, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who was here to address council, I would just reiterate, there are lots of ways to reach us outside of these meetings also, you're always welcome to be here to, to make comments, but we're at the city farmers markets every Saturday for office hours, when the library opens, we'll be back in the library every Saturday for office hours, there will always be one or two, one or more council members there that people can talk, talk with, give input, give ideas, ask questions, get information. So we can, you can also reach us by phone, by email, we frequently meet with residents on any issue, I, I, we go to people's homes to talk to them, to look at issues that affect them, so there are lots of ways to reach council, we're very accessible, and we are very much interested in helping people solve their issues, so. On the issue of fireworks, I, you know, it, we've been dealing with this since 2017, and, you know, I'm not sure that there is a good solution, it's really hard to enforce any, any ordinance that you have, at the time, council, the council decided that to provide one day of legal use. I often hear, oh Cedar Rapids has banned it, why don't you do what Cedar Rapids did? Cedar Rapids had over 700 calls this year, you know, they've had up to 1,400 calls in one year, even though they've banned it. So when it's legal to buy them, people are gonna use them, and enforcement is very, very difficult, although our police department does their best, and they've, you know, been able to, to make some kind of impact, but it's, it's a very difficult subject. I am one person who believes that there's absolutely no way you can use fireworks in an urban area and not impact your neighbor, it's just impossible. So it's a, it's something that is really hard for us as a city to have to deal with when the law comes from the state that prohibits us from banning sales and prohibits us from even regulating where they're sold. But we will continue trying, and I guess we can look at the fines and look at the ordinance, so that's something that is within our control. Thank you, Scott, on the topic of the T-shirt, I just wanna be clear that it's not a city-sponsored T-shirt, it was very private, a private thing that was done by a private business that is being sold. I, I happen to be walking in and, and, but it's, it's all done, and it's all done in, you know, friendly banter, I think, between, between the cities, it's not, there's no ill intent in it at all. The you know, our cities get along very well, we've been collaborating, cooperating, even, you know, more than I've seen it in a long time, and that's, that continues, and we have very good relationships with our, with our neighbors, and so this wanted to be clear, that's not an official city-sponsored shirt. This last week, we had a ribbon cutting actually yesterday for the new Unity Point facility on Tower Terrace Road, that will help them to better serve that fast-growing area of our city, we pride ourselves on giving people a great quality of life and convenient access to good, good healthcare services is a very central part to a good quality of life, and so that facility will have family, family practitioners, I believe, and pediatricians there. So August 1st, I think, is her opening day. Also this week, we did our pilot program of the Marion Type, which is a project that I partnered personally with, on, with, with the Chamber and Medco, and it was an onboarding program, community orientation program for interns and people who are new to the community, and it was a tremendous success. And it was just a three-hour program that, that gave people an orientation and introduction to the community, ways to make an impact here, recreational opportunities, housing opportunities, quality of life initiatives, and it was very well received, the feedback we received was very encouraging, so we'll probably expand that and, and continue to do that in the future, so. That is it, I know that our staff has been working very hard, they have so much going on, so much on their plates, and I've never been more proud to be on a team like this, where everyone is so committed to excellence, and they really are focused on customer service and providing the absolute best services to our residents. And they, I just wanna say thank you to all of them, because I know, I know they work hard, and they really take their job seriously, they, they really have, have put on the attitude of reaching higher, and it's really shown in the last, you know, in the last couple of years, I think, you know, we just seem to be on a roll, but that means that we have more and more work to do, and, and more complex issues, and bigger, bigger issues, and bigger projects, and they do it all, you know, with, with a great attitude and a, and a commitment to excellence, so I just wanna say thank you publicly to all our staff, every one of the 300-plus city employees, so thank you. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting, thank you for joining us.